I'm going to read a resolution that's not on the agenda and was intentionally left off the agenda. Whereas Jerome Maribito has served the city of Fulton in a number of capacities over the years, most prominently as city attorney, whereas he has served a total of over seven years in this position over the last two decades under three administrations, Mayor Drone, Mayor Allerton, and currently under Mayor Bullard. Whereas Mr. Maribito has also served this community and our neighboring communities as a member of many boards, including the Greater United Way of Fulton, St. Luke's Residential Healthcare Facility in Oswego, Oswego County Catholic Charities, and the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce. Whereas he has accepted a full-time position as executive vice president and secretary at the Fulton Savings Bank and will be stepping down as city attorney and closing his private practice at the end of this month. Whereas Mr. Maribito's enthusiasm and dedication as a city official and as a member of our community is well appreciated by his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Fulton, as well as by the mayor and members of this council. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and members of this common council, on behalf of the people of the city of Fulton, hereby express our appreciation to Jerome Maribito Esquire for his seemingly endless energy and dedication to our city and wish him well in his new position. Be a further resolved that this resolution be resolved right upon the official minutes of this common council meeting of June 6, 1995. Official copy of this resolution is filed in the state of Fulton. Please present it to Jerome Adrian Maribito Esquire.
I'd like to move in.
I'll start.
I was intentionally not put on the agenda. It would be more than just a show. The motion and the second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd just like to add a few comments to the opportunity. On behalf of the council and myself personally, it certainly has been a pleasure working with our city attorney. With his tireless work and his incredible work ethic to enable this council to pass more local laws and achieve more accomplishments with his help and his expertise. And I want to thank Jerry for those endless hours and his cooperation and the efficiency that he brought to the office.
Be resolved at the minutes of this council meeting held on April 27th, 7th, May 2nd, and May 18th, 1995. Heard by two.
I'll start.
All in favor?
Aye.
For the meeting of the council held on May 2nd, the city clerk was directed to advertise for public hearing at this meeting of June 6th. Relative to a proposed local law would amend section C-11A in City Charter entitled Point of City Officers. Mayor Bullard will now declare the hearing over.
This is a change, a jazz title that consisted of a new work stage, pardon me, a firework activation regarding qualifications of operators of waste water treatment. It becomes a really changing agenda.
The hearing goes. All in.
Come on in.
Second.
Motion all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the meeting of the council held on May 2nd, the city clerk was directed to advertise for public hearing at this meeting of June 6th. Relative to a proposed local law to adopt a revised property conservation code to replace the existing state housing code, Mayor Bullard will declare the hearing over.
This represents about eight months of work and eight rewrites now for the property conservation code. I've met with various people from business to private citizens and landowners. And we've gone through the code and extensively revised it from its original version. And as much as possible made changes where applicable. We think that the document at this time is in the final stages and is ready for a vote. Seemed to cover just about everything we put on, and I'm satisfied now that that document can go forward for a vote.
Including the hearing over. Please come.
Good evening, I'm Anne Maribito. The chamber is located in the greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce, 352 South First Street. The chamber represents 375 businesses employing over 4,000 people in this area. The chamber is very discerning about this particular proposed property conservation code. Support code enforcement, in particular, in support of this council, the mayor, Dan Vaughn, commitment to post enforcement, we think that's very important. We think that this particular bill goes too far and it's too picky. Dan Vaughn met with us, invited us to take a look at the law. We in turn invited 50 businesses in Fulton to study the law. Tell us how it would affect their particular business. We talked to large industries, small retail mom and pop shops, to professional service firms. Without exception, every single business said they support code enforcement. But the vast majority were concerned that this particular law was too picky, that it would be too expensive for the average small business, the average homeowner. We bet that virtually every building in Fulton is in violation of some provision of this law. So how do you enforce a law that is this widespread? Sounds like it's going to have to be subjective. Because the city doesn't have the manpower to canvass every single house, every single building. And the businesses we talked to are very concerned about that subjectivity. We think that this law is an obstacle to development, it's a roadblock to development. Does City Hall want to send the message that Fulton doesn't want new businesses and new jobs? I don't think so. But we think that this law, in combination with the higher permit fees, is sending a long message to businesses and industries. With respect to the higher permit fees, the industries in our community are very concerned about those. Small businesses, for every dollar counts, are already feeling sticker shock. I have an example that I'd like to leave you with that illustrates this point. You all know about the new Nice and Easy gas station that's going in on 481 next door to Park Deck. That project is a twin of a similar project in Oswego, same general contractor, same project. In Oswego, they paid $300 for permit fees. In Fulton, they've paid $2100 so far. And the contractor thinks it may go as high as $3,000. We hope, but we certainly want to believe that this administration wants to attract new industries and not be the cause of an industry leaving Fulton. But we're concerned that this particular code enforcement bill, that the breadth of this particular bill, in combination with the higher permit fees, is sending a long message that we don't want people coming into Fulton. We want to work with you to promote development, but we're concerned that this isn't doing anything. Thank you very much.
Generally, the concern seems to be that there's not a housing city in Fulton that needs a proposed code. And of course, it can be subjective and subjective. They're trying to figure it out. They're covering all of them together. Number one, this particular code does not have anything to do with permit fees. So I don't think we should even address the question. That's another completely different issue. As far as the code, what was the first one?
If there is a house in the city that complies with the code.
I disagree with that. There are many fine homes in this city, many well-kitted homes, who would comply with this code. There are some that definitely will not comply with the code. And that is the purpose of the code, to make those properties better in our community. As far as the code, the control of the code and how it's controlled, being subjective or objective, we are not doing systematic inspections relevant to this code. This code will fall in the rental housing permits and will be addressed on the basis of complaints. However, we are not doing any programmed inspection of every house in the city. As not the purpose of the code.
Mr. Vaughn, can you inspect a privately owned home? I think there's concern and I think people are confused when you say homeowner. Is it my understanding that you can come into my home at any time and inspect my home?
If you let me in.
Right, and if I say no to you?
Then I walk away.
Thank you. Could you, oh, I'm sorry, I want to keep you here one more time.
I want to ask a couple of questions.
A Nice and Easy gas station. We did have a conversation about that this afternoon, and you did have three meetings for them, right?
That's correct.
At any time, was there a problem with the permit fees?
Never brought to my attention.
Okay, it's quite a small, very, very small percentage of total cost.
Less than 1% of total cost of construction. In a project like this, people don't come to a community or leave the community based on the cost of the permit. It's insignificant, no matter what the fee is. For example, the same cost in Syracuse would be twice as much. And he knows that too, I'm sure that he made the comment, because he built in Syracuse. And he built most recently since there are new enacted laws. So he would have paid almost $4,000 for the same permit that he bought here. The two permits, the one for construction was for $1,855. That's $250,000 worth of construction. And I'm sure he spent probably someplace in the vicinity of, their company spent $10,000 to $15,000 to find out Fulton is the place to be. That's why they're here, not because of fees, they're not going to leave because of it.
Thank you.
Dan, I just have a couple of questions also. What we're hearing is that they want to make sure that there's a priority put on, I think, what is being enforced and what isn't being enforced. Now, naturally, you would deal with the issues that are the most serious.
That's correct.
So that, you know, you're not going to go from the bottom up, you'd be starting at the top, would be addressing the ones that are the most serious.
Right. This law would eventually be relevant to criminal permit law, and it would also be used in the basis of complaints. As I said, we're not going to knock on doors of houses, we don't have enough people to do that.
But I think also that everybody has to keep in mind that, don't let the size of this scare you. Eighty-five percent of this is already state code, is that right?
That's correct.
So the items that were addressed in this were items that were not part of the code that needed to be part of it.
That's correct. Either not in local law or in state law. It was expanded to incorporate the commercial and the industrial sector. And as I said, there were some items that were added in addition to that. Now, did not exist either in local law or in state law, but I thought were necessary in here. It's a good example that it's numbering the poses and structures, I shouldn't say, not just how it's structured.
I guess the concern that I have is this possibility of selective enforcement. You know, people being, you know, Snyder said, nitpicky about the paint on houses. We had a similar instance, I guess, right over here on Broadway, that was brought to my attention by some concerned citizens, about an elderly woman who, I guess, was set a violation because her house was not painted, really. And, you know, ultimately, people cannot afford to maintain their houses the way someone in their late 30s or early 40s put because of their income. And I guess that that's the biggest concern that I have.
Okay, let me give you a little history on that house. First of all, when we cite a house, we don't know who owns it or who the person is. That's why we offered an administrative hearing. They did opt to take the administrative hearing, they came for administrative hearing. We set the case aside, they were cited last year, we set the case aside till spring so that they could go and talk to the C D office, which they're eligible to get help from. And that's what they're in the process of doing right now, so it will not cost them any money. We will be able to take care of them under the paint program at the C D.
I think this is the perfect time, if something like that does happen, as we start becoming a real community. I would much rather give elderly people who can't afford to have their house painted health from the C D A than I would some of the rental properties that have deteriorated so bad because of choices. And I'd much rather have the funds for these people. And also, I think it would be nice for church groups and community groups to start beginning to think of things like this, helping the elderly out. All too often, we let people just stick out there and we talk about their unpaid house and we feel we don't get up and do something about it. And I think our community has to start thinking about things like that.
Carol and I have discussed this at length, and she has kind of an emergency fund that she kind of holds back for me just for these type of cases so that we can address them, you know, and get them out of violation without getting into trouble. So we've been working on that, developing a program to handle that type of person and that cost.
Dan, I have just one question for you, then a comment to Bob.
Sure, sure.
As an employee of Syracuse, have any part in creating a fee structure, do you have a written fee structure?
Well, the most recent one was done since I left, but the original fee structure was mine, yes. They just enacted a new one recently that I have not been working on.
Wow, Bob, you mentioned that eighty-five percent of this law is already an active law. I think we're missing a point once again. We all know that this active legislation, the fact that this does here is amass all state, county, and local charter code into one local law, and the accent again is on enforcement. That is the concern of the general public.
Alice Saboda, 212 Buffalo Street. I would like to ask a question on selling a house. Now, would these codes come into effect? I feel like at our age, we're probably ready to sell. And though we've maintained our house, as well as we've been able to, and put in all the things that have been specified with an old house that we have, there could possibly be some of these things in the codes that wouldn't be accepted. Will this be any, anything in selling a house? When you sell it, will they have to go over it with the code? Dan?
I'm sorry, I didn't get all of that.
Yes, and we saw how the home effect hasn't been really settled, like, we didn't have the best sort of people to sell.
Well, if it's a rental property, is the only time you're really involved. The attorneys now, when you go to buy a house in the city, they're asking the person who owns a house, they represent them, to be sure that they have a rental permit and that it's passed inspection so that the new buyer, the one who's going to buy, is going to ask that question. The attorney's going to ask that question. So that's where you get into a question. Private law, we have nothing, you know, nothing to do with ours trans.
As long as you're selling a house.
Right, there's only one state law that's envalued, transfer for private home. And that's the certificate of the smoke detector now because that's state law. So the only law that really applies to you when you transfer a home as a private owner is just that you have a smoke detector installed in your house and you have to give a certificate at the closing for that.
You mean it has to be installed by an electrician?
No.
Trying to defend ourselves.
Right, you just have to get an affidavit that you, in fact, you have one, you're an operator, and it's been installed, runs with the codes.
My name is Donald Walsh. I don't know, you've probably heard me say this before, but I've been after this Fulton apartment for quite a while. And I don't think the people in Fulton should worry anything about their houses or anything else. These laws have been in effect, but they've never been enforced. They don't know about it. But this city looked terrible. And as of now, even go around the city of Fulton, we just got a little bit has been done with this Fulton apartment, the city looks a lot better. And I don't think that the common council or this code is after anyone in the city of Fulton unless they don't keep their house up. And I don't know why anybody has to worry. I own a house in Fulton. I try to keep it up. I have no worry about Dan Vaughn coming to my door and saying anything about electricity, plumbing, or anything else. If the people in Fulton would just keep their yards, their houses, and everything else. Now, I've been to the Chamber of Commerce, people, quite a few of them, and ask them to help out with this code enforcement. And every time I turn around, I hear one of them going against the thing for some little unknown reason. And I think that the chamber should work with the city employees to help this thing go through. I just can't understand it. If somebody could explain it, I wish they'd call me up and let me know. Thank you very much.
My name's Ernest Avery, Department of State of San Francisco. I became involved with this situation about six weeks ago when I had a tenant crash my place. She was bright enough to call the code enforcement officer on it. For the last six weeks, I've been rehabbing the place. I have been doing it out in Mexico. All my money and investment came back into Fulton. And all the baseboard heaters were ripped apart, the wiring covers, they took doors, of which there were a few minor things that they violated me on, basically the heating, the wires from the heat and ceiling fan. I've replaced all these items. There were no other violations in this house. This has been a HUD house before. I had enormous amounts of problems with HUD tenants. Eight thousand pounds of garbage came onto these houses during the sticker program. And I'm still pulling old furniture out of these after one tenant after another. And the city's answer to this problem is that this is my garbage even though I don't live here. The house looks quite awful, there's shingles going on from it from dogs. I had a new porch put out two years ago. It took exactly 30 days for the first section of the porch to start coming apart. You have something in your code about enforcement on this, it's not. Actually, I was quite angry with the city of Fulton for six weeks, in which I couldn't even see the damage coming that was done to the place, for two weeks after the problem occurred. You want me to maintain my houses, but yet, at the same time, a lot of these people are trashing these places. A lot of other landlords in the city of Fulton have the same problem that I do, in which nothing's being done. Sure, I can take them to court, I can get a judgment on them. It really doesn't do a heck of a lot of good, a judgment. It just costs me money, it costs me money for an eviction. And I, now I find out that when this code's done, I'm not going to be able to do any plumbing, any electric whatsoever. I can't change a fuse or a socket whatsoever. If a faucet leaks, now I'm going to need a plumber to do these items here. If I need a toilet put in, I can't accomplish a toilet along with a toilet seal. I need a plumber to do these items. I don't see any reason why the city should insist that I need a plumber and electrician to do minor repairs. It used to be whatever was code before, as long as you kept it up to code and you had the ability to do it, you could do it before. Now it's not going to be able to be done. I'm going to need a plumber and electrician for everything, which is going to increase the cost of my maintenance enormously. Thank you very much.
Dan, could you speak to that?
As far as the minor changing of fuses and sockets and even the changing of a toilet and a seal, it's not included in this code. It's not included in any of our code, doesn't require any permits, and anybody can do it. So I don't know.
And also a drippy faucet and...
Drippy faucets.
Right, we've talked about this. You can put a new light in, you can install a new light. We've gone through all these things of normal maintenance in a house. And Mr. Ray, I had talked to you on the phone, the one thing that, while your house was deteriorating like this, I understand your frustrations, and in this property conservation code, and maybe Mr. Vaughn can speak to it, there is rules in here that the tenants have to follow also, because that is a problem. Although, as neighbors, we can't go over and tell your tenant to keep up the property. What we are encouraging as landlords is to stop by and pick up their monthly rec and rent and do an inspection of the house. I can't be at fault if someone comes in and destroys the property. This does have some provisions in there for some of the tenants.
Well, I understand that this has provisions for some of the tenants. However, I've had two letters from the city of Fulton before concerning this house. And the garbage was my problem, it was forced upon me, it wasn't my garbage. And 8,000 pounds of garbage is an amazing amount of refuge kept, and you have no idea what it's like and how happy it makes you feel to have to remove these items from somebody else after they evacuate the problem. And I managed to get a letter from the city of Fulton to clean up the problem. Bad enough that I have to go through evicting these people. One time, the problem was already taken care of before I received the letter. The second time, I had already cleaned off the porch at least once. And as soon as I cleaned it off, three days later, that porch was full. I ended up pulling 1,800 pounds of garbage out of this apartment. And the city had no answer to the damage that was done, just like when they crashed the place. I understand that there's answers in this code to protect me, but it didn't protect me. I was fighting the city of Fulton right from that point on for the last six weeks. And nobody was concerned with what they had done whatsoever. I couldn't even go into my place at all till they had evacuated the place. And then I found what he had written. I would have violated me too, no offense.
Yeah, I would have too.
But I didn't do this, you know, in order that I put these items here. I mean, it's all a brand-new apartment in the upstairs place, and now I've got to do window sills. And then eventually, I'm going to vinyl site. But the answer is for me to take a HUD grant? I'm sorry, I work, I save up some money, and then I sink it back into the place. I don't accept taxpayers' money to rehab these places, I do it on my own because I've got other responsibilities in other houses that I'm doing the same thing to. And eventually, it comes right back and it'll be done. But my problem is, what's the sense in putting in a brand-new carpet if people don't have a vacuum cleaner or they're not going to mop their floors to begin with? It's insanity. And I'm getting well ready to feel like I'm going to sell out the heck with this. And there's a lot of other landlords that are saying...
But we can't be the landlord.
No, you can't, but you want to pursue me by cleaning up these problems. And at the same time, they're trashing these places. But, and he has answers to this, of course, I read it. And they were in violation, what are you going to do with these people? I mean, if they're in violation, I mean, I take these people to court myself, you know. But what is a security deposit when they put holes in your wall and gank out your white sockets and your ceiling fans and your baseboard heaters? There's no answer, and you're not going to pursue these people any more than I can.
Well, not for the damage.
Well, not for the damage, of course, but that, they're in violation. But if they rip holes in the wall, it seems like... If I came into a place and there was 1,000 pounds of garbage laying on the floor, my personal answer would be, why are your kids living like this? And call up the health department, it's a fire hazard, and to go after these people before I have to evict these people. I mean...
I know, but we can't even get in, you are the landlord. Well, I...
I can't get in, according to some people.
We talked about this, and it's a landlord problem, and I'd like to...
According to some people, I can't even get into my own house.
Yeah, our tenants are right, it can be frustrating, I know.
Oh, I had no right to get in the court.
Well, in response to Mr. Walster, if the current code, housing code, is doing a good job, as you say, then I wonder why you want another code in its place. It's my opinion, and I firmly believe that this issue of, or this legislation needs to be set aside tonight for even more review. My concerns are these. Issues of cost have yet to be addressed. Issues concerning property owners' rights need to be clarified. Approval from the State of New York Code Council will take as long as one year. People still need convincing that the primary purpose of this code is not designed to raise revenue for this city. And most importantly, a large segment of this community, including the business community, are not at a com- are not at a comfort level with this code. Should we be passing legislation that nobody wants and a budget cannot afford? I believe Mr. Vaughn's supporting remarks in last week's Valley News was an attempt to trivialize this proposal. It shouldn't be trivialized. This legislation enables Mr. Vaughn vast enforcement control over city of Fulton property owners. He will have a range of discretionary power unchecked by the common council, answering to one person, the mayor. Is this acceptable to the council? Mr. Vaughn's claim this proposal is not a revenue generator flies in the face of what he informed the council during executive session. And last month, when this council passed two city union contracts, one counselor remarked that the cost of the union contracts can be made up with revenue generated from this code. And if this is not so, then we pass union raises without adequately providing for their cost. Because this code is lacking adequate judicial review by a property owner, I believe this code becomes predatory in nature upon property owners. What bounds are established for this local law preying upon a property owner? Forty-nine percent of the single-family homeowners in this city exist in the low-to-moderate income level. That simply means most property owners cannot sustain an aggressive code enforcement of this magnitude. If we enact this code tonight, the city will need to hire more personnel to enforce it, according to Mr. Vaughn. And the Code Bureau is asking for fifteen thousand dollars in computer software to support this operation. At a time when the city should be rightsizing, we are instead increasing. Why would the mayor want to do that? One year ago, Assistant Fire Chief Anthony Garia offered the fire department services for code enforcement. The fire department was eager to broaden its duties and to serve the city. Instead, they were rejected. The fire department could have provided code enforcement at no additional cost, personnel cost, to the city. Mr. Vaughn remarked in the Valley News that the same twelve people have been steadfastly opposed to this legislation. And he said the survey conducted by the Greater Chamber of Commerce with the business community found them in one-hundred percent satisfaction. With all due respect, the gentleman is a resident of Liverpool and not in touch with the general public here in Fulton. If he was, he should have known that there is a large segment of this community that I have come in contact with daily, they stand opposed to this legislation. Further, the Chamber of Commerce survey found thirteen problem areas with this code. Therefore, there is not one-hundred percent satisfaction. I caution my colleagues to hear what the people in the business community are saying. We need our business community. Why would we want to drive them from our city limits? I would ask that the city attorney address the concerns of the business community and amend the same to this code. So, I would encourage the council to please postpone this vote tonight.
I'd like to address a couple of issues on those comments. Number one, this, this code generates no revenue whatsoever, and I never said it did. I did say, however, that we may need additional personnel eventually to, to implement the code. That's something I have to wait to see. However, that, those people, I said, would be paid by the fees generated through the permit process, has nothing to do with this. So, I just wanted to clarify that. As far as control and review, we've, by law, you have to present an alternative for enforcement. And, and we have in this section by forming a board of review. That's required by law. That's why it's in there. Also, as you well know, I am constantly under the scrutiny, and as so is anyone in my position of every counselor who sits at this table. So, to say that I have a free hand would, would be kind of wild, I think.
With regard to this code, you do?
I, I disagree. You have constant scrutiny from the public and constant scrutiny from, from council people. How, how can you have a free hand? You don't have a free hand. Also, anyone can go for injunctive relief to the board on any decision made on this code. So, there is an avenue for injunctive relief.
Could you explain why there are, excuse me, why there are two disclaimers in this code?
I don't, you got to tell me what they are.
Judicial disclaimers.
For example?
You wrote this?
Yep.
You wrote this?
Yep. Well, it may be the, I got to see what section you're in.
Just regard that, I'm not going to look it up.
Okay.
There are two disclaimers in there.
In response to you, Mr. Committee, the laws that I was referring to, it's just like you said, there were eighty-five percent of them. But what I said was that they were not enforced, and this will enforce it. If you listen, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Mr. Walsh, I believe you said that.
I don't want to even listen to you.
Charles Back, Riverside. I was a contractor in Fulton for about ten years or more. And one of the biggest things that I, you're passing more codes, the more of, for law enforcement and stuff. I can't understand why you keep passing. I, I really can't get it through my head. If you keep passing, you don't even take care of the ones you got. And one of the ones down in the building, and they had, I fought for years in this city, that each contractor that walks in this city must have a certificate of insurance of some sort of liability. If they hire people, they have a certificate of insurance, they have compensation on the people. That's been going on for this city for over ten years. And you go and ask the building council? They come in this city and they do anything you want. And I've been fighting that situation, and it's still been. And I want to answer about the fire department. I can see it right now that eight men on the fire department, take the big five-hundred-thousand-dollar truck that goes into spectacular port. Then you take, and take some more people and put them into a code violation, or take them in front of court there, that they got to go in front of that and have some people coming overtime. I don't agree with the fire department. But right now, to me, they're part of the people that's caused the problem of a lot of this code, because they're, they do extra job, side work, same with anybody else.
All right. In, insofar as the first question that you had, we do have legislation. We passed it about a month ago here, which now requires general contractors to register with the city to become registered contractors in order to do work here. And when they register, they have to show proof of insurance. That, I know you've been waiting for, for some time, that's, I want to tell you, it's in the law right now. It's already in the law.
Well, I know business, though.
Okay, well, but you asked for about that one.
For ten years.
Right, well, it's finally the law.
There are a couple of contractors fought it too.
Fought it?
I mean, there's still, but you look around the city...
Fought for it or fought it?
You can still go around and see contractors still doing it. I mean, they aren't signed up. I know...
Okay, if you, if you have anyone who you know of, who's working someplace in this city and is not a registered contractor, please let me know about it. We will definitely be glad to address it. As far as the fire department goes, the other issue, I have been trying to get the fire department to expand their expand, inspection status at the present time. They tell me they don't have time. I would like them to start the industrial and the commercial business. They're telling me they don't have time. I don't know how they could have handled this program.
Well, they're trying to do other things too.
Right, I know, what you brought up. And they, they can't be everywhere at once.
One of the things I, on a decoration weekend, and of course, you got it, garbage is supposed to be out the night before, after six o'clock. Is that right? Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Day one. Why don't you go down, around the city on it, the decoration weekend, see what happened around the city? I have never seen a city so disgraced. Garbage thrown all over, especially right down forty-eight. Right down past Fulton Street in the area, garbage thrown out. I think it's been, how many times has that been turned out?
Quite a few.
Okay. And go up a little further, from the bar? How many times has that been turned out?
Quite a few.
Yeah, that's my point.
Is it trash or garbage?
Uh, both.
Well, people ought to learn to pick up their trash and their garbage.
My name is Larry Rowley. I'm a recently licensed contractor in the city of Fulton. I just, Dan mentioned a comment that brings up a little issue with me, if I may. It's kind of a side issue, but he mentioned that this current program that you're talking about, which, you know, I'm all for cleaning up the city and what have you, will be paid for by permits and permitting processes. I think before I got here, Dan mentioned a scenario that's going on with the nice-and-easy stores. We're doing one in a swiggle where the building permits for everything are three and a quarter. The one down here is up around a couple thousand dollars. Dan mentioned to me that I guess the comment was that, in the grand scheme of things, this would wash. I, I see two issues here as a builder and developer and contractor in the city. One is existing properties that are falling down and not taken care of, and the other is the encouragement of new buildings coming into the area. I don't think, obviously, I'm on one side, because I do more building than rehabbing, but I don't think that we should be penalized for trying to do new products. Most of the new products are not the problem. Most of them are, with the new codes, are drawn by architects. Everybody is insured. You have licensed electricians, licensed plumbers. But we're being caused to pay a pretty heavy load to pay for the overseeing of everything. I think if the city wants to grow, yes, you do have to clean up the old stuff, but I think you ought to offer anybody a free building permit to come to this town to build something. There ought to be an incentive to come here for a rebirth or something. I know that's the extreme on the other hand, but you shouldn't be penalized for trying to rebirth something. And, and I think, hopefully, as you look at the new projects going up, most of the code enforcement issues aren't with them, they're with other issues. So, I know that's a sidebar, I wasn't going to bring it up. Sidebar, that's a new term. But Dan brought up the issue of the permitting process covering, I watch a lot of TV at night, as you can tell. Thank you very much.
I just happened to be researching back through some old literature that the city had, and came across a master plan, last one we did back in nineteen sixty-nine. And in here, it talks about programs for elimination of existing blight and the prevention of future blight. And if I could, I'd just like to read a couple of comments out of here. It talks about a program for the improvement of the substandard structures should be undertaken. Enactment and enforcement of adequate codes and ordinances and progressive action for elimination of conditions which cause neighborhood deterioration. Conservation of dwellings and neighborhoods may be encouraged through enactment and enforcement of adequate codes and ordinances, including the zoning, zoning ordinance, building code, housing code, electrical code, sanitary code, subdivision regulations, and New York State multiple residency law, and adoption and use of land development plan. Specifically, it goes into a little bit about building code, and it talks about the city of Fulton adopted the applicability of the Uniform State Building Code in nineteen sixty-five. The purpose of the building code is to provide basic and uniform regulations for building construction or reconstruction to establish reasonable safeguards for the safety, health, and welfare of the occupants and users of the primary and accessory structures, and to require adequate construction standards. The building code, however, applies only to new construction. New York State Model Building Code has been adopted by some five hundred towns and villages. And one more item, it talks about the housing code, the need to set minimum standards for the use of residential structures, and the comments that the state of New York has pioneered in the preparation of the housing code. The housing code applies to residential structures, whether existing or new, in the interest of health, safety, and welfare of the residents. And it provides for inspection of substandard dwellings and enforcement of compliance with the code. After the many meetings we've had on this issue, and the few phone calls I've got in a negative fashion regarding it, I'm in favor of this code. I think we've spent sufficient time reviewing it. I think Dan Vaughn and other members of the council allow anyone who wanted to come forward and speak to either individual aldermen or to Dan Vaughn, had the opportunity. Those who showed up, we dealt with them. And I think we dealt with them fairly, and we answered their questions in the best of our ability. Thank you.
I just have a few comments also. Unfortunately, over the years, I think we've all seen our city deteriorate to the point where it became a real concern. And this, this mayor and this council, majority of the council, had as a priority to make those kind of improvements to make our city a better place to live. And one of the areas that we emphasized was the need for better code enforcement. One of the first things we did was hire a bureau chief. We were very fortunate to get Dan Vaughn, who came to us with a great deal of experience, a great deal of enthusiasm, and a lot of new ideas on how to make the improvements that we needed. The next thing we put in place was a Bureau of Code Enforcement. This is the third step. This is the property conservation code. I agree with, with Larry Rowley that we certainly do want, do not want to impede the new development, but rather, our emphasis should be on the, the existing structures. And if there's a way that we can do that, then we certainly should look at that. We have had, I, this particular item has had more people looking at it than any item that we've seen since we've been in office. The Chamber of Commerce has responded. The aldermen have had input. Landlords, contractors, private citizens, everyone is concerned, because we don't, we don't want to pass legislation that's not good for everybody. And I think we have to have a little bit of confidence in our people. I don't think that I want to think that Dan Vaughn is going to be a tyrant, and he's here to destroy the, the city. I think he's here to make a lot of improvements. And I also think that the council, in the position they're in, elected by the people, are not going to let legislation be overpowering. We're certainly going to be very concerned and very considerate. If some of the, if some of the things aren't working, then we'll change them. I think we've, we've looked at this, and I think it's time to start. I think it's time to start somewhere. As Alderman Cavallaro said, this has been a long time coming. And for us to stop now and say, well, let's look at it some more, let's look at it again. Any of the items that were addressed, Mr. Vaughn looked at each and every item. We had even specific words that were in the code that some people felt shouldn't be in there. So, he addressed all of those things, and I think he's done a good job of presenting a property conservation code that is for the benefit, the majority of the people in the city of Fulton.
I, I'd like to take the time, a few moments. I ran on code enforcement, and I didn't know that until I went and talked to all the people in my ward, and they, they begged me for code enforcement. They told about how they couldn't sell their house, how they live next to a painted house, how they were sick of tenants abusing houses and throwing garbage. They aren't responsible for that, these homeowners. They were putting their life's investments in home, and it was going down. I back this a hundred percent. And I do offer, me as an alderman, any administrative hearing, I will attend with anyone in my ward. I believe that Dan Vaughn will always be fair. I have been in him with him. He is a very open-minded man. Nothing in this legislation will be hurtful to Fulton. If it is, if it's proven to be, every alderman in here will be knocking on his door. So, not just the mayor, but every alderman. And anything that is brought forth, the common council can be rescinded. I am all for this. I want to get it voted for tonight, and everyone in the fifth ward knows how I'm going to vote for this, and it's all for them. I'd like to move that, please.
I'll second it.
Before they vote, was there anyone else who wanted to say they didn't officially close the hearing?
I, I just wanted to think more, more, perhaps that we've already gone through three steps in this process. I was wondering if the fourth step was going to be to hire more employees to see that this is administered properly.
I don't know that. I don't know that. I don't know that, I don't know that.
Well, we do know that, Mr. Vaughn has said, I guess the question...
I don't think that's necessarily wrong either.
I don't think I can address some of that issue. Number one is, is we are looking at a computer program, as Mr. Terimigi brought up today. I'm hoping that if we can get on a computer line, we can do it with the people we've got. I'm not positive of that yet, and I can't answer your question thoroughly, but that's our hope. If we can't, we hope to generate enough money through the revenue permit process that we'll be able to afford that without burdening the taxpayers any further.
Do you want to clarify?
I just wanted to clarify a point. I am for code enforcement, I just didn't feel that the new construction should be being planned tonight.
And I wanted to thank Larry for becoming a registered contractor.
Yes.
Check it, insurance.
We're at deals, I live here in Fulton, I've been a contractor for 41 years, had a license for 41 years, I now have my license put up. People can't afford these fees. And there's really no sense in me talking, because from what I heard here, I know where the vote's going to go. There's not much to say. I am going to come down to the city, though, not recognizing what the day is, it has nothing to do with this. We had a ceremony across the street this morning, not even the mayor was there, none of you people were there. You didn't recognize the veterans, the ones that lost their lives 51 years ago today in the evasion of Normandy? Not a one of yous.
We weren't notified, sir.
You weren't notified, you don't know what June 6th is?
No, I'm sorry, but...
No, you don't even know what a veteran is. It was, "Don't laugh, it isn't funny."
It's, sir, we do have other lives, and I had a doctor's appointment this morning. If I would have been notified, I'd do come to the war memorial.
I'm not going to argue with her.
Thank you. It was 50 years ago. Not 51.
50 years ago, I'm sorry, ma'am. But there wasn't a soul there, and you didn't even recognize it tonight. You pledged allegiance to the flag, but you didn't even recognize the veterans. As far as this code goes, and I quote from Dan, "I'm going to make all the money I can for the city through this code," and I quote, them are his exact words, and I can get six people to back me up that was there when he said it. Thank you.
Clear the hearing.
No.
Alderman Terimigi.
No.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen.
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor. This meeting, the council held on May 2nd, City Clerk was directed to advertise for a public hearing at this meeting on June 6th, relative to proposed local law to amend section C9 of the city charter entitled Eligibility for City Offices by deleting the residency requirement for the city attorney. Mayor Bullard will declare the hearing open. This merely eliminates the residency requirement for a city attorney. Does anybody want to speak on this issue?
May I have a case, Judge?
Deletes the residency requirement for the city attorney. Present city charter said that, says that the city attorney has to reside in this city.
Is this for the city attorney only? Because it says here, officers, that's plural, that's more than one. If it's only for...
It's a section, the eligibility for city offices.
Okay, then I would like to read that it's for the city attorney only.
It is, it says that in the resolution.
But it's plural, it's got an S on it, it's plural.
That's not the resolution. Thank you, Judge. Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
I have a comment. First off, I was just wondering what this was in the backup for? Where did this come from?
Nikon information relative to some information regarding villages and what they have done other than having a village attorney, if you will, and how that might apply to this situation.
Basically, it's all village law. I did find you need the second paragraph, though. My other comment was, I'd like to remind you that the appointed position of city attorney is not a political appointment, rather, one of professional service. There exist in this city, to my count, eight qualified attorneys. An appointment should be based upon the person's professional ability only. If each and every attorney who resides in this city has declined to accept the position of city attorney, then this council has a unique problem. But I don't believe that to be the case tonight. I stand on the firm belief that a resident of this city deserves first crack at any job that is available in this city. I would yield to the condition that if no qualified candidate from the city is available, then we should extend our search into the adjoining townships of Bounty and Granby. And I would insist a sunset clause be placed into the proposal, returning to our present local law on January 1, 1996, if we have to go to the adjoining townships. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, I think that one of the things that's been obvious is that the position of city attorney has become a very complicated and far-reaching position in that law today is different than it was 10, 15 years ago. There's many more issues and many more complicated issues where, at different times, we're forced to go outside the city to seek other counsel. So I think if anything, and I don't think that once again, there's going to be any particular, not using people that are city residents for a city attorney, but it also gives us the flexibility of at least looking outside the city. By that, I mean the county. But I think it's always a consideration, and I think that goes without saying, that qualified people will always be considered.
Anyone else?
Yes, I see a pattern setting. We, as Dan said, you know, he's from Liverpool, now we're going to have a city attorney who does not have to live in the city. I'm just concerned that, you know, what department had, if they resign or retire or something like that, are we going to go outside the adjoining towns or go to Syracuse to hire someone, where someone within the city of Fulton should be hired? And that's my concern, that we're, you know, starting to go outside the area to bring people in, possibly for political appointments, you know, I'm not sure, but it should be done strictly within the city of Fulton, employees should be hired.
As far as I know, the appointment of the city attorney is a mayor's appointment. Is that correct?
With the approval.
With the approval of council.
I just see a trend setting.
I might just offer that in the section C9 of the city charter, the city engineer is not required to live in the city. Perhaps because of the unique situation of the city engineer, as with an attorney, the unique license that's required, perhaps we should have the flexibility beyond the city limits.
But we do not even have a city attorney.
We don't?
I mean, city engineer, excuse me.
We don't need one.
The position is still within the charter.
Some of it.
Was the public hearing closed?
Yeah, I want to get the resolution. Second?
Second.
Clear the hearing closed. Alderman Lincoln.
No.
Alderman Terimigi.
No.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen.
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Resolved that the common council hereby allocates $12,100 from the promotion of tourism account, for the recommendation of the Fulton Tourism Council dated April 25, 1995.
Mayor and council, the Fulton Tourism Council was formed in 1991 by then-mayor Muriel Allerton to help shed some light on what some of the needs are for occupancy tax spending. The bed tax funds come from your local hotels, and what the Tourism Council does annually is we set a budget and recommend to the council. A lot of times, we do half a year at a time. This year, we have $12,100 in requests that the council has received, and we're recommending those to you. $6,000 is for the chocolate festival, which we believe, and I'm not sure if I'm correct in this, but we believe that you had already earmarked those funds, and what we're doing is confirming that request, and they had come to us for additional funds, and we did not recommend those because we don't have, there aren't enough bed tax funds to go to everyone. Some of the things that we've recommended are for one-time events, as well as some long-term things that will help continue to promote tourism in our city. One of those things is for $2,400 for a banner program along the utility poles along 481, much like the banner program that was started on the bridges. $2,400 would come out of bed tax funds, the matching $2,400 will come from eight different events that will be held this summer. That was one of the stipulations that we had to local events that wanted bed tax funds, they had to participate in this program that we're recommending. And they also had to participate in another program, which is brochure racks. We asked, we would like brochure racks to put throughout the city at some of our restaurants and the hotels. We have brochures that go throughout the area promoting our area to people outside, but we don't have racks so that people, if they stop into Burger King while they're visiting here or on their way, they can show them what's here to do while they're here. That will be $700. We have required all of the local events that will receive bed tax funds this year to have brochures on those racks. Are there any questions?
I have one question. The utility pole program, and I only want to direct this to Mrs. Snyder. We've got, obviously, got a problem with that program. Are you still going to need that $2,400 for banners in as much as you've got no place to hang them?
This utility pole program would work... This utility pole program, we've already talked to Niagara Mohawk about it, and it's fine. And the way that it would work is on the utility poles along 481, starting down at, you know, if you run the quality and going down towards Mimi's, we would have, remind me how many, I think...
Eight.
Eight sets of four?
Thirty-two. Banners on those poles running the length of the city. So our intention is that we create a billboard kind of effect as you're driving through Fulton, and you'd see lots of bright, colorful banners. We've talked to Niagara Mohawk about it, and they see no reason to believe that there should be any kind of a wind problem or whatever. On the other utility pole, I'll just tell you, we asked Niagara Mohawk to see if they would put their engineering prowess at figuring out how to stabilize those poles. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
I just want to compliment the Tourism Council and the Chamber of Commerce on their long-range thinking and their support of different events to bring tourism into the city. As Alderman Allen has said many times, tourism is something that we have to constantly promote. We can't just rely on the people in the city of Fulton, and we need to attract more people into the city and emphasize the things that we have. We definitely have chocolate, we certainly, that was a tremendous idea of turning that at the River Fest into a Fulton chocolate festival. Lions Club is excited about bringing powerboat races onto Lake Nanawata. So these are the kind of things that I think are so important if we're to continue to bring business into our city.
Somebody want to walk with this?
Move it.
I'll second it.
Also, before the vote, once again, John and I may have to abstain because we're voting on something that's going to the Lions Club, which is an organization we belong to.
You should. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To abstent? Would like in? Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Solved that the city clerk's report for the month of April 1995 in the amount of $7,283.34, hereby approved, received and placed on file.
Move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Solved scheduled bills payable 41 through 45, having been audited by the auditing committee of the common council, hereby approved.
Move it.
I'll second it.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the consignment contract between the city of Fulton and Roy T. Worth Incorporated for the first annual municipal surplus equipment auction hosted by Swiggle County to be held on June 10, 1995, 10:00 a.m., Swiggle County Highway Department Route 104 East, for the purpose of selling surplus equipment, vehicles, unclaimed bicycles, and various miscellaneous items no longer needed by city departments.
I'll move it.
Second? Second? Mr. Allen. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas Bonnie Marini of Mama Gina's, 101 South Second Street, has applied for vendor's license to sell food and soft drinks from June 8th through June 8th of 1996 in Bullhead Point. Be resolved, the council hereby approves the application for the vendor's license by Bonnie Marini of Mama Gina's and direct city clerk to issue the license in accordance with the Fulton City Code.
Now, move it. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Whereas the city of Fulton has outgrown its current phone system, the city of Fulton currently has 28 Centrex lines and is unable to expand the current system to any more phone lines. Whereas the city of Fulton is currently under a lease rental agreement which expires October of 96, whereas the city of Fulton has received a proposal from Altel, which would expand the current lines from 28 lines to 49 Centrex lines, giving the city the capacity that it will need. Whereas a proposal submitted by Altel is a 60-month lease purchase agreement rather than a lease rental agreement. Be resolved, the city authorized the mayor to enter in a 60-month lease purchase agreement for a new phone system for the city of Fulton. I believe Mayor Judy Young from Altel is here to explain and answer any questions.
Mrs. Young?
I guess I'm here to see if anyone has questions on it that they need answered. Mainly, you've outgrown the system you have, and we've proposed a system that you can't outgrow. The one you have has a cabinet, and when you need to grow, you have to add cards to it, and we're offering you a software-based system that works directly from our central office and does not require a cabinet, so there's no way about growing, you just add lines and a telephone when you need to grow. You'll end up with a lot more lines than you have now.
I have a problem with the phones, I mean, there's a new physical phone going to be on, I guess, those old phones are incredible. We'll put them in the auction for you, if you'd like.
We're going to give you a buyback on those phones.
Thanks, but no thanks. Thank you.
This new system, though, will, for a given period of time, even save us some money.
Yes, and you're going, like I said, there is a buyback on the existing phone, so you will get some funds back for trading up.
Oh, I see, okay, we get a trade-in then.
You get a trade-in, right. So that does benefit you. But that has to be taken advantage of by June 30th. That's the reason we wanted to present it to you.
Thank you. Does this allow, does this system allow for a voicemail service? You provide that?
We have, we have central office voicemail. You can use the current system, or you can, and they are using it in some of the offices here now, but...
Would that be very costly to implement throughout the city?
It's $4 is the smallest mailbox, every, you know, you can, everyone can have a mailbox or just keep people, but the smallest box is $4.
I mean, like, Water Department's going to have one phone service, Fire Department's going to have one phone service, Recreation's going to have one phone service, or is this going to be all tied into one?
I'm not, I have to ask Mrs. Young.
Everyone in the City of Fulton will be tied together into one service. You'll have three-digit dialing that you can do between all of them. You'll be able to transfer calls, call between all locations.
Because it stands now, like, the Water Department, they have their own phone service. Sewerage Treatment has their own water service, or phone service.
Well, they have their own phones, different phones, but they can still call three-digit dialing between all locations now.
Okay.
Somebody?
Yes, I got a motion, the second, Your Honor.
And the, and the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved, pursuant to Part 617 of implementing regulations pertaining to Article 8 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act of the Environmental Conservation Law of the Lead Agency being the City of Fulton, New York has determined that a proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment, that being new well construction and well replacement.
It's the new well that was drilled at the Great Bear Farm.
I'll move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved, that pursuant to Part 617 of implementing regulations pertaining to Article 8 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act of the Environmental Conservation Law of the Lead Agency being the City of Fulton, New York has determined that a proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment, that being new well construction and well replacement.
It's the new well that was drilled at the Great Bear Farm.
I'll move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved, that the mayor is authorized to enter into a, into any and all agreements with the New York State Department of Transportation for the state's Route 481 resurfacing Second Street, Fulton, New York.
I'll move it.
Second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved, City Chamberlain is hereby authorized, directed to issue a revised tax bill and refund for Empire Visiting Center 115 Rochester Street, Fulton, New York, for the 1995 taxes per the stipulation of settlement in order from Oswego County Supreme Court.
Just to correct you, an amount built in error, not in compliance with the court order. Move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
As a meeting, the Fire and Police Commission held on May 15th, a resolution was adopted recommending that the common council accept a proposal submitted by Northern Fire Equipment dated May 15th, which regarding, regards trading in the currently owned Mack rescue truck and engine four and purchasing a new rescue truck from the New York State Bid List, contract number, item number 13. Whereas, the common council agrees with the recommendation made by the Fire and Police Commission. Therefore, be resolved, the council hereby accepts the proposal submitted by Northern Fire Equipment dated May 15th, 1995, as specified above.
I'll move it. Second.
This is the situation where the city is going to get rid of two old pieces of equipment, one that was involved in that serious accident a couple of years ago in May, and get a functional rescue vehicle out of it that would not cost the city any.
Is that the bottom line? It's not costing us any. Because I got a little confused in reading this, that at some point in time, there's going to be some additional cost, but I wasn't clear as to what amount.
Not for this vehicle. Longer range, you've still got a fire truck that you have to replace, which is part of your capital improvement, Mr. Biden.
I'd like to make a comment before the vote. First of all, I want to commend the professional Fulton City firefighters for their quick responses to two major fires where they were there within two minutes. And also, on this particular resolution, the fact that, obviously, the chief and his people have determined that there is a much more efficient, effective way to use their equipment, and I strongly recommend it.
Second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved, that Chapter 20 of the Code of the City of Fulton, entitled Planning Commission, is hereby amended by the addition of Section 20-4D, which shall read as follows. Section 20-4 Powers and Duties Report, D., Paragraph 1. Prior to the common council authorizing the release, termination, abandonment, or other action which results in or could result in diminution of
Dimmunition.
Thank you. Of the subsurface water rights, aquifer rights, water drilling rights, or any other rights affecting the subsurface water supply of the City of Fulton, whether such rights be stipulate within or without the corporate limits of the City of Fulton, the common council shall obtain a written recommendation from the planning commission. Two, the planning commission shall submit its recommendation to the council within 60 days of the receipt of the written request for a recommendation, which written request shall be made by any party in interest, including the common council or any other official of the City of Fulton. Three, nothing in this section shall be construed as requiring the common council to adopt or reject the recommendation of the planning commission. The role of the planning commission for the purpose, purposes of this section is deemed to be advisory only, and the common council is only required to review and consider the recommendation of the planning commission.
This is, this resolution is being proposed to give more protection to our well water supply. We have aquifers all out through the town, and at times, the drilling rights have been given up in those aquifers, and this, this will help to protect some of the city's rights. Water is a very important commodity. Someone want to offer that?
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
As a meeting, the Plumbing HVAC Board held on April 6, 1995, a resolution was adopted recommending that no permits for plumbing or HVAC work may be gained by other than licensed, insured, and duly registered contractors, except in the case of an owner, occupant, desiring to do his own work in his own home, provided he meets all provisions in subsection 182-16 of the Plumbing Board Rules and Regulations. Whereas, this common council agrees with the recommendation made by the Plumbing HVAC Board. Therefore, be resolved that subsection 182-15A is hereby amended to read as follows. When applying for a building permit where plumbing or HVAC is involved, or plumbing HVAC permit issued to the licensed contractor will be required, except in the case of an owner, occupant, desiring to do his own work in his own home, provided he meets all provisions in subsection 182-16 entitled Work by Homeowner Inspection Required.
You want to move that?
I'll move it. Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Chirimiji? Motion carried.
Resolved, that City Chamberlain transferred $20,000 from the A1990 contingent account to the A8140 storm drainage account to cover the cost of emergency catch basin repairs.
Move it.
I have a question. How much right now do we have in our contingency, kind of ballpark figure?
Take 130,000.
140,000.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas Darlene Taylor, Secretary of the NSA Car Club, Rathburn Road, Fulton, New York, has applied for a special license to conduct a not-for-profit antique car show to benefit a local family at said Bullhead Point on Saturday, June 24th, 1995, from noon to 6:00 p.m. It is resolved, the council hereby approves the application for a special license by Darlene Taylor of the NSA Car Club and directs the City Clerk to issue the license in accordance with Fulton City Code.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
As a meeting, the council held on May 18th, a resolution was passed directing the planning commission to hold a public hearing relative to a zone change request submitted by Larry O'Brien, Oswego, New York, for his property located at 9 West First Street, from M1 Manufacturing to C2 Commercial, in order to remove existing buildings and construct several new retail stores. Whereas, subsequent to the public hearing, a recommendation was to be submitted to this council at this meeting of June 6th. Whereas, Fulton Planning Commission held their public hearing on May 31st, 1995, relative to the zone change request submitted by Mr. O'Brien. Whereas, at this meeting on May 31st, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to accept a zone change request submitted by Mr. O'Brien, subject to the approval of the Oswego County Planning Board. Whereas, at their meeting held on June 6, 1995, the Oswego County Planning Board approved said request. Now, therefore, be resolved, the council agrees with the recommendation made by the Planning Commission and the Oswego County Planning Board regarding the zone change request submitted by Mr. O'Brien, and therefore grants a zone change request to Mr. O'Brien for his property located at 9 West First Street, Fulton, New York.
I'll move it. Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
This resolution, Your Honor, I have to move the regularly scheduled meeting from July 4th at 7:00 p.m., but I don't, I left a blank for the date that the council may want to hold it in July.
Council want to propose a date in July.
I'd like to propose a date of July 11th.
The second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas, Third Ward Alderman Robert Weston has received a request from residents of Sheridan Street for the abandonment of such street from the east street of the line of the existing pavement, thence easterly to the west line of Oswego River. Whereas, a legal effect of a street abandonment is that the property in the street that is deeded to the adjoining property owners. Now, therefore, be resolved that the unpaid portion of Sheridan Street from the east edge of the existing pavement, thence easterly to the west line of Oswego River, is hereby abandoned. And be further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute proclaimed deeds, deeds to the adjacent property owners. And be further resolved that this resolution for street abandonment is predicated on there being no viable municipal purpose for the real property being abandoned. Be further resolved that the deed from the city shall reserve unto the city a permanent easement for public utilities, including rights of ingress, egress.
I'll move that. I'll second it.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas, First Ward Alderman John Arlinson Jr. has received a request from the residents of Walrus Street for abandonment of West 4th Street, north, the north line of Walrus Street, to a point 132 feet northerly therefrom. Whereas, a legal effect on the street abandonment is that the property in the street that is deeded to the adjoining property owners. Now, therefore, be resolved that the unpaid portion of West 4th Street, north, from Walrus Street, north, for a distance of 132 feet, is hereby abandoned. Be further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute proclaimed deeds to the adjacent property owners. Be further resolved, this resolution for street abandonment is predicated on there being no viable municipal purpose for the real property being abandoned. Be further resolved that the deed from the city shall reserve unto the city a permanent easement for public utilities, including rights of ingress, egress.
I'll move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas, pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of 1995, a targeted retirement incentive program was authorized, authorized by the New York State and local employees' retirement system. Whereas, pursuant to that authority, the City of Fulton adopted Local Law Number 6 of 1995, entitled Retirement Incentive Program. Whereas, pursuant to the adoption of said Local Law Number 6 of 1995, and pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of 1995, targeted means a position has been selected for elimination. Therefore, be it resolved that the following positions are hereby abolished. One, one head custodian effective 8595. Two, one signal maintenance worker effective 6395. Three, two motor vehicle operators effective 61 and 6395. Four, one water maintenance worker effective 7195. Five, one water and sewer maintenance worker effective 6395. Six, one laborer effective 6195. Seven, one laborer effective 7195. And eight, one personnel director effective 61795.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the following position at the sewage treatment plant be abolished effective immediately, one sewage treatment plant mechanic. Do you want to move that?
Move it.
Second.
Is this an unfilled position?
This is a position that was hired, I understand, to do some, I and I worked, that person's now out at this road. Give me a second.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed?
Opposed, yes.
Motion's carried.
For City of Fulton has applied for an electric service for the Great Bear Farm Water Pumping Station on Route 57. Whereas, pursuant to that application, overhead and underground line easements must be signed by the mayor of the City of Fulton as the official executive officer of the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the overhead and underground line easements for the Great Bear Farm Water Pumping Station on Route 57.
Move it.
Second.
It's the electric service for the new well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas, by petition dated January 12th, 1995, First Ward Alderman John Arlinson Jr., Second Ward Alderman James V. Chirimiji, did institute legal proceedings against the City of Fulton and Syracuse Stars Hockey Club, Inc., seeking a judicial determination that a certain management agreement between the respondent, City of Fulton, and the co-respondent, Syracuse Stars Junior Hockey Club, Inc., was null and void. Whereas, by the bench decision of the Honorable Robert J. Nicholson, Justice of the Supreme Court, on April 7th, 1995, by written order of the said Judge Nicholson dated April 26, 1995, which judicially determined that the petition was without substantive legal merit, and said petition was dismissed. Whereas, said order was filed in the Oswego County Clerk's Office on May 3rd, 1995. Whereas, said order was served on Salvatore F. Lonza, attorney for the petitioners, Alderman Jared Arlinson Jr. and Alderman James V. Chirimiji, on or about May 19th, 1995. Whereas, a notice of appeal was served by the said Salvatore F. Lonza on behalf of the petitioners, Alderman Lincoln and Alderman Chirimiji, on the City of Fulton, on or about May 22nd, 1995. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the notice of appeal and all future proceedings with respect to the appeal filed by the petitioners, Alderman Lincoln and Alderman Chirimiji, are hereby referred to the city attorney for his action.
Anyone want to move that?
Move it.
Second.
I have a statement. The original question Alderman Lincoln and I placed before the Supreme Court was whether or not a management agreement was properly executed by this council. We did this because John and I felt, as we still do, that the best interests of the people of this city were not being served. We especially didn't believe that public interest was best served by yielding control of a million-dollar facility the next 20 years for a $2 bill. We believe other avenues for and sources of revenue were and are still available to the city should any deficit be perceived. The Supreme Court did dismiss our petition based on technical issues, but we believe of the three areas addressed by the court, the fact that it considered the management agreement not to be a lease, as we have contended, is in questionable error. Hence, an appeal to the appellate division of the State of New York was set in motion. This appeal will not cost the city money, as John and I have our own attorney. It must be noted at this point that prior to the appeal being set in motion, Alderman Lincoln and I did try to resolve our differences with the mayor and with this council, but found the mayor steadfastly opposed to cooperating in this issue. The fact of the matter remains, Alderman Lincoln and I believe we must seek what is right for the people. However, new avenues have opened to us that we will explore. We still encourage this council. We still encourage this council to consider working with us, but nevertheless, we will examine these new approaches. Presently, our attorney is out of the country. When he returns, we will shift our focus on this issue away from the appeal process to the new avenues I referenced in hopes of establishing justice for the people of this city.
Jim, I did get a phone call about that and I did ask Mr. Cavallaro if anything, any offer that you made would be put in writing. I know it's a legal issue and I don't want to talk about it at the table, but there was a cost to the city. And I guess I've been given the wrong information and I appreciated it, it would be put down in writing because I know that there was a settlement and it would cost the taxpayers some money.
No, what you're speaking of Alderman is a separate legal issue involving indemnification of a public official.
Two separate issues.
Right.
We, I'm not going to come up here and ask a bunch of legal questions, we got enough lawyers in the room. Um, who currently is setting the fees for that facility and when the city is in control of that facility for its term? Who, I guess the question is who sets the fees over there now?
Now.
Right now. So the city sets the fees even though you're setting the fees for the ice time and things of that nature?
It's, that's not correct. By the management agreement contract, the fees are set by the management.
So if we have a problem with the fees, who do we take that to?
At what time of the year, what, you mean for?
That, that's what I just asked, I, I asked who was setting the fees for the time of the year that the city.
The city sets the fees for its facility when they have control of that facility.
And then during the other course or the other time of the year that it's set by the other individual. So if there's a problem with a fee issue, then depending on what time of year it is, would dictate who we would see about those fees?
Right.
If we felt that they were getting excessive. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're May first to September first.
Is that the actual date?
I think that's August twenty-seventh. August twenty-one.
Thank you.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that Jeanette Peacock is a department head who will be retiring effective June seventeenth nineteen ninety-five, will have her medical insurance premium paid by the city of Fulton through May of nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that chapter one sixty-five of the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the city of Fulton, New York, be amended to read as follows. One sixty-five dash six, school speed limits, no person shall drive a vehicle at a speed in excess of that indicated in schedule three subsection one sixty-five forty-seven, and the area is described as sets schedule three during school days between the hours of seven-thirty A M. and four-thirty P M. Subsection one sixty-five dash forty-seven, schedule three, school speed limits. In accordance with subsection one sixty-five dash six, no person shall drive a vehicle in excess of the speeds indicated below in the areas designated below during school days between the hours of seven-thirty A M. and four-thirty P M. Name of the street is Bakeman Street from Sheridan Street to Wickham Road. Speed limit is twenty miles per hour. Location Lanigan School.
Someone want to offer that?
I'll move that.
Second.
Second.
I just want to, I want to make a comment too. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Matthew of ninety-six Bakeman Street are here tonight and I especially want to thank Mrs. Matthew for all the concern that she's had for the safety of the young, young students at Lanigan School. And I'm certainly a hundred percent behind this, this resolution.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas Ernest Clark, nine and a half Center Street, Fulton, New York, has applied for a vendor's license to sell farm produce from June tenth nineteen ninety-five to June ninth ninety-six in Bullhead Point. To resolve, the council hereby approves the application for the vendor's license by Mr. Clark and directs the city clerk to issue the license in accordance with Fulton City Code.
I'll move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that City Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to increase the amount of petty cash for the city marina from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Muriel Allerton, eight twenty-seven Forest Avenue, Fulton, New York, to the library board to fill the unexpired term of Kathy Grant, effective immediately until expired December thirty-first nineteen ninety-six, is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve City Chamberlain transfer one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents from the contingent account to the building account to cover the cost of the relocation of two telephones in the municipal building.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You want to have any, does anyone have any further business with this council? Mr. Elias? Would you please come to the microphone?
My name's Mike Elias, I noticed on this that you've reduced stadium that's in, in a certain section of town. How about doing something over on Chestnut Street? And on Benchet and Broadwood Avenue. Is that street still a one-way street from eight o'clock in the morning to four o'clock in the morning? From Giller Drive to Benchet?
I don't know the.
One section of Chestnut Street? Seven to three-thirty, Monday through Friday.
Science is eight to four-thirty, but the sign is halfway down. But, uh, for one thing, uh, you could have somebody over there between the hours of two-thirty and say, three-fifteen or something like that. The speed up there is tremendous. And I counted at, at times, school buses coming across that intersection, if you were making it twenty-four school bus. They come to the railroad tracks, they do not come to a stop. I, I sat there and I watched, well, it's about three, four days that I watched to see what happened. And school buses are not stopping at the railroad crossing.
On Chestnut? Chestnut.
Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ted Muller and I live at fifty-two West First Street. I'm here to discuss the park in front of my house. The thing is, I've been mowing it for the last month. And I also put some flowers out there. I noticed today, the town has finally come out to mow it. I've also put in requests through Mr. Lincoln to get the shrubs cleaned up there if I could. I don't have the paperwork, but doesn't seem to be anybody been out there. And the bank right across the road, now they were out there today and they mowed the park. But there's the bank on the other side of the road, going up Worth Streets on the left-hand side. And they didn't touch that. The grass is like this, hasn't been touched at all this year. And.
Yes, it is, Mayor. I've also processed the work order regarding that area that it's been maintained by the city also. It's, it's the bank that as you are coming south of forty-eight or First Street, it's right over to the right-hand side across from where.
And the trees there are very overgrown. And, and the shrubs on the park are too. I was going to take it upon myself and clean them up. But I've been informed that it's part clean.
We'll take care of it.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Bob Clark, Tannery Village. A few months ago, the council come to the citizens of Fulton, said, boy, we got a deal for you. Let us add five hours and fifty cents a month of your water bill and we'll pick up your garbage. We're going to clean this city up like you've never seen it clean before. I guess that answered that question. This city's in a shambles. Now what we do, uh, we have junk cars, we put a antique title to them and value them at over seven-hundred and fifty dollars and we can park them in our yard. So I mean, that, that's really helped clean up the city. I can take you over numerous streets here in the city and show you what I call swamp lords, apartments with five, six, seven couches piled on the front porch, two or three refrigerators, washers, dryers, you name it, piled on the front porch. You peek around behind the house, you think you had an amnesty day a year ago and I think the mayor and a few councilmen were in total shock. I think we have more stuff hoarded in the city now than we did then. Then you said, well, let us buy a garbage truck. That's the problem, we need a new hundred thousand dollar garbage truck? Now we're going to buy one with two compartments in it, one for garbage, one for recyclables. Geez, it's funny, but now we pay extra money and I know for a fact that it was extra money for this type of packer. Any day of the week, you can see city employees throwing garbage in both sides of the packer. Why do we spend the extra money for it then? Our garbage is in a shambles. I mean, our garbage is garbage, I guess for lack of other words. It's terrible, this city is worse now than it was then.
What portion of the city, what portion of the city are you talking about?
Anywhere you want to drive. We, we have a.
Excuse me, just, just a second, anywhere you want to drive?
Anywhere you want to drive, I would say in any.
I drive in the fourth ward daily and I don't see the kind of garbage you're talking about.
Well, there's one, I don't know, what ward's the Nineth Street on, by the old Y M C H?
My ward.
Well, check the front porch right on the Nineth Street on the right-hand side as you're going out.
I have.
It's a garbage pit.
That's one street, where else?
There's other ones, I'm not going to get Pacific and name, we need to be specific. I, I will get with my alderman and I'll give him some specifics.
The correct stuff.
Okay, but what I'm saying though is, we got conned into this garbage truck. Now, we were also told at that time that for five hours and fifty cents a month, we were going to have, break the city up into four quads. Three people, city employees, were going to pick up garbage in the city. I think we got more people now picking up garbage than we did before at five hours and fifty cents a month. We have more garbage in the city now. It's, it's terrible, I don't know what you, what you're trying to claim here. We're, we're writing up senior citizens for not painting our houses. And we're tearing down a few buildings, I'll give you credit for that, you tore down a few houses and made a few vacant lots look pretty, but now people are throwing their garbage on the vacant lots. So I don't know if that improves anything. But, you know.
Would you do me a favor, would you call my office tomorrow with the specific address that there are garbage?
Okay. Yep. Well, my bottom line, I guess, is can we expect an raise in our tipping fee in the near future?
You would know, you work there.
I still pay it.
But you would know whether we can expect it.
No, no, I'm talking from the city. Our tipping fee of five hours and fifty cents a month? That is added on to the bills when people are only in town for six months all year, they pay it twelve months all year? Is that going to be increased in the very near future?
I don't know, it's not budgeted that way now.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Our, our tonnage has gone up though, I think I talked, I talked to Tim about it, is our tonnage has gone up so people are putting more garbage to the road and that's the big piece are higher.
Well, if you see them bringing it in from out of town, you tell them, you can have an arrest.
But the bottom line is you're turning this five hours and fifty cents a month to cities and more than change now, what is your?
Well, I, I don't agree with this.
I don't agree with that. That's your opinion.
Mine is several, I agree with it.
You've never had to go there.
My name's Dave Laiter, I just opened the one thing west of, west First Street. Not going to be quite as vocal as this gentleman, but I have the same concern. The mayor's secretary can confirm that. I've called the mayor's office three months in a row on garbage being picked up in front of my store, recycle day. Yesterday, Monday was recycle day, today was garbage day in that ward. There are still packages on the street, take a ride up and down West First, West Second, anywhere around there. Across the road from my store, the end of Pizza Hut parking lot, there's a fifty-five gallon drum there, the trash here. Memorial Day, there was vendors there selling balloons, their boxes are still laying there. Got to get the people on the stick that are supposed to be picking it up. Somebody needs to look, see who's not doing what. You've got a serious problem, like the gentleman said. And I'm not talking about garbage furniture up on people's fortunes, I'm talking about out at the curb that's not picked up. Now, they used to have stickers that they put on, granted it's supposed to be separated, if it's not separated, okay, somebody got to do something, you don't just leave it there. Day after day, week after week, something needs to be done about it. Whether these people need to make a list of addresses, somebody follow up on it with the homeowner or the occupant of the apartment. Somebody needs to do something. The city's looking terrible, like the man says. Thank you.
Anybody else? Can you change the motion to adjourn? Move it. Second. Any favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?